June 16th, Carter County Board of Commissioners meeting. Commissioner Moore, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. The invocation will be provided by D.J. Hunt, pastor of the Mariannetha Pentecostal Wholeness Church in Beaufort. Welcome, D.J.
Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you tonight, God, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for your many blessings upon our county. Father, Lord, as we gather together, Lord, for this meeting tonight, God, Lord, we pray for your direction and your blessings and your guidance over this meeting. Father, tonight, God, Lord, keep our county safe, Lord, put a hedge of protection around us all. Father, Lord, we love you, we thank you, Lord, for everything that you do, and in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or the appearance of conflict with any, with respect to any matter coming before the board this evening? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in the particular matter. We're all good for that. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Shan, seconded by Commissioner Quinn, all in favor? Take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Shan, seconded by Commissioner Moore, all in favor? Next, we'll recognize the April, May, and June recipients of the Jamie Hicks Long Employee of the Month Award. Mr. Nick Wilson.
All right, good evening, everyone. We're here to subvert the Jamie Hicks Long Employee of the Month recipients for the second quarter of 2025. I think we've got one here this evening, so I'm going to run through April and May first. So we're going to bring with April honorees Brittany Ward. Brittany serves as an office assistant in the Women, Impacts, and Children, or WIC, Division of the Health Department. For those who may not know, WIC provides nutritious foods, healthy eating education, breastfeeding support, and healthcare referrals to pregnant, postpartum, and breastfeeding women, infants, and children up to age five. Brittany plays a vital role in ensuring families in Carter County reserve these essential services with warmth, efficiency, and dedication. Brittany's commitment to our community really shines through her outreach efforts as she visits state cares and avoids young girls below and spreads awareness about WIC benefits. Her passion for helping others extends beyond her daily tasks. She's always the first to offer support, whether it's training new staff, promoting teamwork, or creating fair rotation schedules to balance workloads. Known widely as the organization queen, Brittany keeps the real office running smoothly by maintaining up-to-date forms and resources and ensuring both staff and participants have what they need. Her excellent customer service helps WIC families maximize their benefits, navigate the EBT Edge app, and schedule appointments with ease. But what truly sets Brittany apart is her infectious positivity. Her kindness, humor, and uplifting spirit make the workplace brighter for everyone. She embodies the heart of WIC's mission and the values of the Health Department. So at this time, please join us in congratulating Brittany Ward on this well-deserved honor. I'll be sure to get that too, Mr. Moore. So our May honoree is, honoree is Josie Boyett. She's library assistant with the Beaufort Branch with the Carter County Public Library System. Josie has transformed our adult programming with her popular short story soiree and engaging craft workshops, all while keeping our children's programs running strong. Whether it's toddlers at Storytime or avid book lovers at her monthly events, Josie has a special way of making everyone feel welcome and engaged within the library's vibrant atmosphere. What really sets Josie apart is her ability to bring people together. She has a genuine talent of finding captivating local speakers, from veterans sharing their stories to historians digging into the county's rich past. And when it comes to teamwork, she's always the first to lend a hand and ensure everyone works together smoothly and effectively. Her annual poetry month contest has become something kids and parents eagerly await, look forward to each spring. Thanks for her strong partnerships with local schools and the Beaufort Friends of the Library. Regular patrons know they can count on Josie to remember their names and interests. That person will touch me so much in our community. Josie represents everything we value at the library: creativity, dedication, and a genuine care for our patrons. She makes our Beaufort Branch shine, and we're incredibly thankful for her. Let's give all, at this time, give Josie a big congratulations on this well-deserved honor. All right, and finally, our June honoree. We're excited to subvert Shawn Cherry, accountant in the Finance Department. Day in and day out, Shawn plays an important role in keeping our county's finances running smoothly. From managing online banking and insurance programs to assisting with payroll, she ensures every dollar is accounted for with precision professionalism and a sharp eye for compliance. Her thorough work not only meets strict auditing standards, but also helps the entire finance department, and by extension, every county department operate more efficiently. Shawn also brings a very positive energy to the workplace, always smiling and happy, which brightens everyone's day. Beyond her spreadsheets, her contributions extend significantly into the workplace safety. She volunteered for County Safety Committee and goes above and beyond to educate staff. Whether distributing safety flyers, leading fire drill preparations, or creating hands-on training props, her efforts have made countywide operations safer for everyone. Shawn's dedication to service also extends beyond the office. She is actively involved with a nonprofit organization, Island Cat Allies, supporting their trap dew or return program. This initiative focuses on the humane care of feral cats, and over the years, Island Cat Allies has effectively managed and reduced the feral cat population in Beaufort, improving the lives of hundreds of cats through regular feeding, vaccinations, medical care, and spaying and neutering. This same thoughtful and dedicated approach characterizes how she serves Carter County every workday. Shawn's contribution to financial expertise, commitment to safety, community spirit, and positive demeanor makes her an invaluable team member. So she is here tonight, so please join us in congratulating Shawn Cherry on this well-deserved honor.
Okay, moving right along. I did forget to mention Commissioner Walgrup has an excused absence tonight. She is at the Marine Corps graduation in Paris Island for her godson. So she's, she is excused, and certainly we miss her here, but that's much more important to be with her family. Next, we are going to have the recognition of the Croatan lacrosse team for the state championship. Commissioner Quinn, will you present the commendation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The 2025 high school lacrosse season culminated in a thrilling victory for the Croatan Cougars, who entered the state championship as the undisputed number-one seed with an impressive 20-2 overall season record. Their journey to the title was capped by a dramatic 13-12 win over the formidable three-time state champions, Lake Norman Charter Schools. The championship game came down to the wire with just 20 seconds left. They netted the game-winning goal, securing the Cougars' victory. The team's consistent offensive threat for four varsity seasons, Mr. Mache Roth proved his leadership once more as he provided the crucial assist on the winning goal and finished the game with two goals and three assists. Defensively, Mr. Graham Mars was a brick wall while in goal, making 12 saves and earning him the well-deserved title of state final most valuable player. The championship team was built on experience boasting 15 seniors. Got a lot of work, a lot of work to do next year, Coach. Fifteen seniors. A few of these graduating players will be continuing their lacrosse careers at the collegiate level. Mache Roth is set to play at Lynchburg College. Graham Mars will join Lenore Ryan University, and Andrew DeGeorge is committed to Lander University. The Cougar's success is a testament to the longstanding leadership of their head coach, George Benson, who has been at the helm since the program's inaugural season in 2015, supported by assistant coaches John Bradley, Bobby DeGeorge, and Troy Myers. I'd like for y'all to join me in congratulating the Croatan Cougars' state championship lacrosse team.
Come on in, take a picture. Did you have any other teammates across the hall, or? Okay, yeah, I understand. Summer vacation is hard, you know.
So a couple of certificates of recognition from the county grand, sir. Mache.
That's an accomplishment you'll never forget. Awesome job. Congratulations. Awesome job. Those are memories they'll never, never take from you. Yeah, you're free to go, you don't have to sit through this. You are excused.
Thank, thank y'all for coming in.
We don't want to punish you no more than necessary. If you're in the other room, we've got nine, nine seats that opened up. There's two right there in front. Is there anybody outside our Chris, wants to come in? Okay, next, we have public comment. If you will, come to the podium, you'll have three minutes to speak. If you will, for the record, state your name and address. First, we have Tabby Nance.
Good evening. My name is Tabby Nance, and I have three parcels of land on Laurel Road, just north of Beaufort. The primary is 400 Laurel Road. A rezoning request for a parcel on Laurel Road was made to you several months ago, and it was not approved, and I thank you for that denial. That same basic request is now coming before you and will be on your July 21st meeting agenda. Jeff Pilcher is again requesting a parcel be rezoned from R15M to B1 conditional use, and it is my understanding his plan is to purchase the property contingent upon that rezoning. I've spoken with and emailed Greg Hartman, and I appreciate the information he has shared with me. Mr. Pilcher's new request is downscaled a bit from his previous request, however, it still requests a change in zoning. And if granted, there is no restriction that would prohibit him from returning with another request to add additional development that he initially planned for. There is no moratorium once it's granted. Laurel Road's a busy street, yet it remains rural, residential, agricultural area with family businesses. All of Laurel Road is R15 with a very few exceptions. Parker Boats on the corner that does not use Laurel Road as industrial access. A parcel owned by a church that is vacant. The community college is fire training center. And the parcel directly beside the land Mr. Pilcher wants to rezone is owned by the Coresdale Waterfowl Museum and is in a conservation trust. That seems to be completely against what he is planning to, with his rezoning request. Mr. Pilcher's request for this land to be rezoned is not compatible with the family business, rural, residential, and agricultural properties on Laurel Road. Additionally, I am concerned that a rezoning request for this parcel would set a precedent and open that proverbial door for more requests to follow. The county has zoning in place for many reasons. When citizens purchase property in zoned areas, they have an expectation that the zoning will protect them and their investment. On the rezoning application, Mr. Pilcher noted that there were horse stables on Laurel Road. One is mine. I question Mr. Hartman about the relevance, and was I in any kind of violation? And he quickly said no, and he did not know why that was on the application. So I'd like you to, to consider that when you read that, because Mr. Hartman said public and private stables are permitted uses in R15. Thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns with you, and I hope you will take my comments in consideration when you reserve, review your board packet prior to the July 1st Commissioners Meeting, when the public hearing on this request will take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nance.
July 21st.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, you said first, so it's got me scared, I was thinking, oh, you're gonna be first. We knew what you meant. Next, we have Trey Reibnberg.
Trey Reibnberg has three parcels on Laurel Road, Carter Farm. Speaking on the same thing Tabby was, Jeff Pilcher tried this last year, went to the planning board. They pretty much shot him down, so we won't even commercial property on Laurel Road. Comes back less than a year, and all of a sudden, they come up with some engineers, they're all on the plot plan, and they're passing, they're coming to y'all next month. Two things, there's no other commercial property on there, but Parker Boats all the way on the corner, and the fire station that's been rezoning that for 40-plus years. Laurel Road, as y'all know it, is luck. They all have problem getting rid of water, it floods every storm, whether it's a regular storm, rain event, whatever. My farm takes the brunt of it on the whole east half of Laurel Road. On his actual plot plan, it shows you existing ditches of me carrying all the work. You know, just like Tabby said, I bought this as agriculture, an R15 zoned area, along with other people, and we kind of want to keep it that way. I mean, if we're going to keep doing conditional zoning, I'm going to put up a budget under the gas station. You know, that's, but that's not what it's for. I mean, I could do a lot of stuff with my land, I could put up 100 post orders in that case, but it's not what we're zoning for. You know, all of us there hadn't done anything against our zoning or anything, and so we're looking to see you next month.
Are you Trey's brother?
I am, sir.
I know, I'm Joey's brother, sorry. God bless you. God bless you. You got it backwards there. Next, we have Mr. Zach Brown.
Good evening. Zach Brown, 620 Laurel Road, about directly across the street from this area. I just want to echo what Tabby and Trey said. I don't believe that the area's not zoned for it, it shouldn't be changed for it. We met last year on this, and Cresco said that this would be impressive, I guess they don't do it last year, so. I just want to echo that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next, we have Nicolena Merle.
Hi, I'm Nicolena Merle, I reside at 123 Laurel Road. I'm not going to go over the same speech, but I agree with my neighbors. We would like to keep it a residential location and not remain commercial. My husband and I, we do have a business, but we are residential. It's just a place where we park our trucks at. We don't do anything further than that, so I'm just in agreement with my neighbors and would like for that not to be rezoned commercial.
How'd you get those great numbers for your address? You can't ever, you can't ever forget that. Thank you. Next, we have Shelley Phillips.
So my name is Shelley Phillips, and I reside at 204 Church Street in Morehead City, North Carolina. I'm here tonight and a voice for many of the people in this room. I'm come tonight as an advocate. I work with a group called United Together Services, a nonprofit committed to supporting individuals who are in custody and who have no voice, no advocate, and too often, no hope. I was asked to speak tonight, not only because of the work that we do, but because I am living proof of why what I have to say is so important. I'm also a survivor of a wrongful conviction. I served 11 months of a 30-month prison sentence before advocate was able to get me released. I currently await a final decision through a pardon with Alice Johnson, the pardon saisar, and currently under the review of President Trump. I continue to use my freedom to fight for those still trapped and assist them that has failed them. Since my release, I worked alongside of this team investigating wrongful conviction cases across the country. And tonight, I'm not here to point fingers at anyone, but I am here as a citizen of Carter County, and I am deeply alarmed by what we have found and what is going on. I fully understand that this Board of Commissioners does not direct criminal investigations to more prosecutions. But what you do control is the funding and oversight of the local sheriff's department. And that's not a small thing. In fact, it's one of the most powerful tools of accountability that you possess. And with that power comes a duty to ensure that tax dollars are not used to violate the Constitution, deny people their basic rights, or fund a system that lacks transparency and fairness. When we began investigating this case that we were reached out to in Carter County, we believed it to be an isolated concern. But we were wrong. A petition that granted over 500 names in less than 12 hours showed us that the flood of cries for help that followed this were overwhelming, case after case, and too many to ignore, all revealing the same pattern of constitutional violations, ignored evidence, questionable witnesses, and apparent disregard for due process. Tonight, I just bring to you attention the case that started all of this was Hugh Willis Jr., a case where this person was convicted in Carter County without any physical evidence, without any credible testimony, and with little apparent regard for presumption of innocence. If any member of this board would like to review any of the details, I am happy to share them with you. But let me be clear, this is not just about him. It's about the system that if it's left unchecked, threatens the safety, liberty, and dignity of every person in this county. When a justice system abandons fairness, it ceases to be justice at all. And when we ignore its failures, we become complicit in them. And what I'm asking you tonight, it's not radical. It is well within your authority. I know that you don't decide who's charged, and you don't decide who's prosecuted, but you do control the budget, and you do have the right to ask questions, to demand answers, and to call for an investigation into practices that may be undermining the very rule of law. No department, especially one funded by public money, should operate without any oversight. No badge, no office, no title should be immune from accountability. And I ask you, because I know most of you, and I have the utmost respect for all of you, show the people of Carter County that the Constitution is not optional, that due process is not negotiable, and that this board will not turn a blind eye when there are serious credible concerns that brought to your doorstep about constitutional violations. I thank you so much for your time and allowing me to speak, and more importantly, I thank you for the courage to act on this, because I know it would be easier to be silent and let it go. But justice for somebody who sits behind bars with no evidence against them, no credible witnesses. He can't wait any longer, and justice to me is more than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Next, we have Mr. Brian Nicoloe.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff, want to thank you all for your service, sovereigns, great to see you here tonight. Last speaker is very inspirational, actually. America has one of the highest incarceration rates of nonviolent offenders in the world, so yeah, it's systemic, and we need to do something about it. But I'm here to talk to you about something different tonight, and it is about who is Data Republican? All right, Data Republican, she's a patriot. Data Republican is a software engineer. She is also an anonymous data scientist. She runs a website offering tools like grant searches and charity graphs. Data, and she operates this website called datarepublican.com. Try to remember that. She has been doxxed, she has been threatened, that's why she wants to remain anonymous, so I'm not going to mention her name tonight. But her work involves using AI to expose government waste. She maps financial connections between officials. The key to her work involves identifying factions, motives, and money. For example, recently, we had a nationwide protest, and you wonder who funded it? Who funded the No Kings Protest, which took place on 14 June 2025? 200 progressive organizations, including Indivisible, the ACLU, the American Federation of Teachers, 5051 Movement. They've involved private donations, non-governmental organizations, federal grants, an amount of $1 billion was funneled through this, and foreign funding. And some of the private donations incurred, included Christie Walton, the heiress of Walmart, George Soros of Open Society. The NGOs were used in 2020 to subvert our elections. NGOs were used in, in the invasion. They've funneled traffic people to our borders, and now we got 20-some million undocumented people here. Federal grants included routed through ACLU, American Federation, and foreign entities, including 40% of the funding from China, which included paid protesters. So they were able to amass in 2,100 cities these protests and in 20 countries. So the funding structure involving multiple stakeholders. However, it makes me think that regardless of the factions, motives, and money involved, the globalists were able to gather a coalition of actors, and in some cases, chaos. So I wonder why, in Carter County, what it takes to get patriots involved. I don't advocate for violence, but advocate for gathering and coordinating as patriots in the event of unforeseen circumstances, when people come to your county and start waving flags, false flags, and, and ulterior motives behind them. We need to come together as patriots in this county to coordinate, and I suggest you start talking to your neighbors. I'm not fear-mongering here. Just talk to your neighbors, come up with a plan, and then expand from our neighborhoods into the county and come together. I'd like to see us incorporate a citizens' grand jury, and that'd be a first step into coordinating our efforts as a county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nicoloe. That's all that has signed up to speak. Would anybody else like to speak? Is there anybody next door? I thought he was going to check next door right quick.
course, to celebrate Independence Day, and we hope that everyone will be safe during their celebrations. Please take care, and we, of course, always have a lot of folks who come visit us down here for Independence Day, so keep that in mind. Also, our summer reading program at our library has officially launched, the 2025 program. It's titled Color Our World, and it runs throughout the summer at all five of our library branches. There's something for all ages, so please check it out and get involved this summer. And finally, this week, at the end of the week, the North Carolina City and County Management Association is actually having their summer conference right here in Beaufort, and we will have city and county managers from all over the state to come down and learn about leadership and discuss important topics for all local governments and to see what an amazing place we have in Carteret County. And that's all I have unless you have questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Next, we have appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate the following to the ABC Board: Karen Hardesty, Brandon Sewell, and Tim McLaughlin.
All right, motion for the Carteret County ABC Board by Commissioner Clark. All in favor of Ms. Hardesty, Mr. Sewell, and Mr. McLaughlin? All right, now I just have it. Next, we have the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board. Michael Krasinski, reappointment to a two-year term. In favor of Mr. Krasinski?
Agreed.
All right. Mr. Krasinski is appointed. Next, we have the Fireman Relief Fund Board. Allison Benz, appointment to a two-year term for the Broad and Cales Creek representative. All in favor of Ms. Benz? Next, we have the Highway 70 Corridor Commission. Do we have three appointments for that?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to table one of those. I've got a person interested in that. Can we appoint Mr. Patrick Flanagan and our new assistant county manager, Matt Renaud, and hold off on the other one?
Yes.
All in favor of Mr. Flanagan and Mr. Renaud? Next, we have the Carteret County Transportation Committee. Patrick Flanagan. All in favor of Mr. Flanagan? Next, we have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Pamela Stewart, reappointment to a two-year term. Susan McIntyre, reappointment to a two-year term. What's that?
Paul Bickey.
This one?
Anthony Paul Bickey.
Anthony Paul Bickey. Thank you for that because I knew that wasn't a Hockers Island name there. I was trying to see how I was going to say that, but I was dancing around a little bit.
I worked with Tony at the college.
Thank you. We'll just call him Tony. All in favor of Anthony, Susan, and Pamela? How's that?
I could see you were going.
You knew I was going to mess that up. Next, we have the Senior Center Advisory Board. Michael Guden to a reappointment to a two-year term. All in favor of Mr. Guden? Next, we have the Carteret County Zoning Board of Adjustment. Bradford Owen, appointment to a sitting member of the board for a three-year term. Mr. Owen currently serves as an alternate, so he's moving up to a true member there. All in favor of Mr. Owen? All right.
Chairman?
Late duty tonight.
Can I interrupt right quick?
Mm-hmm.
I just want to make sure we clean this up the way that you want it and the way the board intends. On the Highway 70 Corridor Commission, the position that you tabled is actually reserved for the economic development. So, Rod Kirk has to be in that position?
All right, well, we'll put him on there then. All in favor of Mr. Kirk?
Yeah, if you would like to vote again to take one of the other two off, to reconsider, we can do that, or we can just keep that name for the next time there's an opening.
Now, we'll leave them all on there. I know Mr. Benz is retired for medical reasons, and I had a guy that was interested in that, but we'll...
So, we'll keep that in mind for the next seat. Will that work?
Thank you very much.
Their staff, I'm sure they'd be glad to not be on there if you let them.
Nobody shows up to the meeting, so they're looking for more people to be on there to pull front.
Mr. Benz showed up at every meeting.
He did.
He's hard to replace.
Jesse was a good board member.
Yes, he was.
A very, very nice fellow.
We can also check to see if they'll accept an alternate to take the place if one of our three can't go.
I appreciate that. Next, we have Commissioner Comett. Mr. Moore, we'll start with you.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and spoke this evening. Certainly, there's a lot of information that needs to be looked at and reviewed. Jamie Hicks, Employee Award, Brittany Ward, Josie Boyett, and Sean Cherry, I'd like to congratulate them. Also, I'd like to congratulate the Croatan Lacrosse for state champions. Hope everybody, all the fathers, had a great Father's Day yesterday, and that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Happy Father's Day to all those belatedly, and a thank you to the, and congratulations to the employees of the month that Commissioner Moore named over, and also to the Croatan Lacrosse team. Before we meet again, we will be celebrating July 4th, so please enjoy the time with your family, enjoy the time celebrating the Declaration of our country's independence, and be safe out there. Some folks' idea of safe fireworks is to keep it out of the hands of the children and let the adults who've been drinking all day shoot off the fireworks. So, y'all be careful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Clark.
I'm going to keep it short and just admonish everyone to drive home safely because I think it's a little ugly out there tonight, and so we can see you at the July meeting. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Commissioner Shin.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, too, I'd like to congratulate the Jamie Hicks employees of the quarters, Brittany Ward, Josie Boyett, Sean Cherry. I appreciate their dedication and loyalty and hard work and, you know, all they do for the county, and just encourage you to keep it up. Glad to have you, want to keep you. Also, I think I got the name right. Welcome Sherry Ashley? Is that correct? Did I get that right?
Shelley Ashley.
Shelley Ashley, I'm sorry. But welcome aboard. Glad to have you. Hope you'll be one of those recipients in a quarter coming up soon. Mr. Nicoloe, always appreciate your comments coming in every month. You do a lot of research, and so much appreciated. Your patriotism doesn't go unnoticed, so thank you for that drive. Appreciate the comments from the Laurel Road folks this evening. They certainly got ahead of it this year, or this meeting, if they're coming back next year, no, month, I'm sorry. I tripped up a little bit. Anyway, they're coming back next month for a public hearing, so we'll have to watch and see where that goes. And also, I'd like to wish everybody a happy 4th and safe 4th of July, and just a little bit of comment on that, you know? We've had, all over the country and right here in Carteret County, we had this No Kings protest over the weekend. I think it rained it out for the most part here, but you know what? In actuality, every year since 1776, we've had a No Kings celebration, not a protest, but a celebration, and it's called the 4th of July. So, I hope everybody will remember that and take that into account. We live in the greatest nation on the planet, and there's absolutely no reason for anybody to be protesting. If you don't like what we've got going on here, go back to the country you're advocating for. So, that, Mr. Chairman, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shin. Vice Chairman Mansfield.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to say too much. I'm embarrassed everybody's been so short, so I'd like to...
Keep in the tradition.
That's right. Keep in the tradition. I would like to, before I recognize those nice winners have done such a great job for the county, is to remember Jamie Hicks, who was a great employee, who we lost to a tragic situation, and we do this to honor our employees, but also to honor Jamie. So, it's very special for Brittany, Josie, and Sean to win those awards, in my opinion, and I'd like to thank all of our employees because we appreciate all that you do. You're the frontline, you do all the work. We're just up here on the cameras and not looking pretty either, but we're up here.
Speak for yourself.
Well, touche. But I'd like to welcome Shelley also. I mean, I think it's a great place to work. I think there's some employees sitting in this room that have been here for a long time, working for the county, and they are very valuable, and you're going to be very valuable, too, and we're just glad to have, add additional assets to our team. And with that, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy Independence Day, to be safe. Everybody have a great summer vacation, and congratulate the Croatan Lacrosse team because winning a state championship is a memory that those coaches and those children will never forget, and it's just one of those valuable moments in your life, and I was fortunate enough to have one of those experiences, so God bless everybody. Have a great 4th of July. Appreciate y'all coming out.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Mansfield. I'll be brief as well. Yesterday was Father's Day. Hope everybody had a good Father's Day, and 4th of July is coming up real soon. I want everybody to be safe. Some people are talking about canceling 4th of July, but they're not going to cancel my 4th of July. I have festivities, I can tell you that. And welcome Shelley to the team. You'll find a good group to work with. We've got a lot of good things going on in the county and better than spending some time, in my opinion. I see a lot of the Willis family here tonight, and we're paying attention. And Brian, I don't know if you know Shelley back there in the background, but how about talk with Shelley? You might be able to give her some insight on what to do, but God bless y'all, and with anything further, anything further to come before the board tonight? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Vice Chairman Mansfield, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. All in favor?
Y'all have a happy 4th.